We've got several things we're gonna kinda go over tonight. I got feedback that last time when we started with kinda the recap and just went over, it was a good refresher, all the questions that you'd answer, asked before, and the answers you received, and just kinda buttoned that down to make sure we're good. After that, Chief Franks, Ms. Donley are gonna go through police and then Parks and Rec. Ms. Provuznak's gonna go through just reserve summaries. She and I together are gonna go through the five-year capital improvement plan and the capital budget, and kinda go through the notable item summary. And Mayor, we may need your help with kinda going through that. It may be too soon to get, make some decisions. We've got a couple more meetings in May. I've heard from a couple council members that they may not be here in June for various reasons, so it may be advantageous, desired by some, to kinda get some decisions made before June to have the budget made. Certainly not pressing the board, but that's what I've heard. And from there, there are a couple decisions we would ask the board to make. The first one is probably a fairly simple one. Staff are recommending staying with the league of municipalities for insurance purposes. Is everybody comfortable with that? First off, I'm seeing, I'm assuming that's consensus for the record. So Ms. Reed, just for setting up all the employee meetings and things like that, that's helpful, thank y'all. And then the second issue that we need to figure out before June is that if we're gonna change our stormwater fee schedule, we need to make that decision before June so that we can let the county know there's a timing issue administratively with getting any changes to that stormwater fee rate. And that's it. So before we get started, any questions or concerns with process or timeline? Again, I believe our next meetings are next Monday and the one after that.
Correct. Next Monday is at 5:30, since we don't have a regular council meeting after. And then the 22nd is again at 5, since we do have a 7 o'clock.
All right, thank you. Ms. Provuznak, or if we wanna go in straight to Chief Franks, whatever.
Please.
Thanks, y'all. Oh, and I'm sorry, I forgot to do the quick recap. Messed that up. Sorry, Chief. So just a quick recap, we've given you the attached, the copies of the fee schedules for zoning and planning. We've sent the repair request to DOT for the Potter Pleasant Plains intersection. We were asked about the timing of when newly-built properties are included in the budget for abhorrent tax purposes, and it's basically the assessment date as of January 1st. So any changes coming after January 1st are assessed the following year. So I think, you know, as properties and homes and whatever get built, that's the way it works there. You should have electronic copy of the pavement condition index for all roads in town, a breakdown of labor costs for all the recent stormwater projects we've done. I believe Mr. Parker indicated it was about 60% labor. So that is a pretty high cost we pay contractors. For that, you should have a copy of the current resurfacing list of roads, as well as what we projected to be maintained for fiscal year '23, '24 with about a $1.2 million budget. We do wanna caution that that's a rough projection. It won't end up likely looking exactly like that. And I say that just don't go and show, you know, promised neighbors that this list of roads is gonna get done exactly, because that can change for a variety of reasons. You should have a chart incorporating 3% inflation in a lot of those road calculations. You should have the sales tax revenues based on tax rate changes during the evaluation. Remember, we talked about how that affects the proportional percentage of sales tax distribution within Union County. We've reached out to Union Power, but I believe that as of now, I haven't heard back from them. And we weren't able to find the colors that match our town logo colors exactly, but providing a singular color that would be relatively close would be about an additional $2,100. You should have a copy of your comparison chart of various stormwater fees. And we've given you the cost sharing and alternative options for Skidsteer, we looked at that. Erin, we've got a slide on trash fees. That'll be the last follow-up item. So that, as she's getting, I wanna thank everybody, thank the staff for kinda helping work and get those together, and the council for asking such good questions.
You wanted just a little bit more information on a potential, the potential of a solid waste fee that came up during our annual meeting this past winter. So I just wanted to give you a little bit more information and let you know that this is preliminary information. If you wanted to implement this, it would be a situation where Ms. Provuznak and I would have to get with the county, and it wouldn't be for this upcoming budget, it would be for the next budget, because it would take a while to implement. But just wanna let you know that per North Carolina General Statute 160A, 314-1, we are able to charge a solid waste fee. It allows us the ability to do that. There are actually three types of solid waste fees, but there's only one that's applicable to us because we don't deal with the actual disposal sites. We don't have our own disposal site, so there's only one fee that is applicable to stallings, and that is the collection fee. It is not tax deductible, so this would, although it would be on the residence property tax bill, it would not be a tax deductible amount, it's just because it's an extra fee. In lieu of taxpayer, you can use it in lieu of taxpayer dollars to fund solid waste management programs. And usually those municipalities that open enterprise funds for this sort of fee, they do it for the total amount. In other words, if we were to charge the citizens the total amount that it costs us per household, then usually that's how, when you open up an enterprise fund in order to keep all that money separate. But the towns who just charge a portion of that fee usually just have that money go into the general fund, which is allowed as well. So you just have a lot of different options. Like I said, it wouldn't be applicable for this coming budget year, but if that's something the council wants to move forward with, we could come back to you so that you could make some decisions on certain points, whether you want to implement the solid waste fee at the total cost for residents, or if you just wanna do a portion, et cetera. So we just wanted to bring you back that, more information on that.
So the total cost right now is what, $15?
$15.50 per household, yes, sir. And then on top of that, you may recall, we also pay a once-a-year fee for recycling. It's about $50,000, a one-time fee. So if you really calculate per resident, it's gonna be a little bit more than $15, $15.50 because of that recycling fee.
What are the pros to the town for doing a fee versus the way we have been?
I mean, definitely a pro is you're gonna get some revenue from it, right? Right now, the town pays all of your solid waste expenses through the general fund, which come through your tax dollars.
Oh, will you account for that already in their tax rate?
You guys set the tax rate. So we, as long as I've been here, we've never taken a calculation of the solid waste charge versus, unless you did that prior to my being here, Mayor, if you.
No, you're right.
But to date, as far as I'm aware, we've never really used that in the calculation of the tax rate. You know, you guys can think about it. If you want staff to look into it for budget year, the next one, you know, just let us know, we'll be happy to do that. It would be more legwork on Ms. Provuznak's in dealing with the county and making sure we got those included on the correct tax bills.
What would be the decision date for that?
That's a good, that's a good question, yeah.
When would you need to know that we want you to look at that for next year?
That's a good question. I can contact the county tax collector and ask them how much lead time he needs for that.
So to David, to your question, I think that the only, well, a benefit that I think is worth considering is it does help us with labor and inflation in general, meaning that if it's a separate fee, an increase that's expected in a few years after this new contract phase runs out, it's sort of self-funded, meaning it's got a fee attached to it. Preserving the general fund tax rate from wild swings of inflation, if you could do it for everything, it might be worth it, but it doesn't mean you would keep 18.6. You'd probably drop the 18.6 down to something like, I'm making this up, 13, right?
And that's an option, too, to think about, is if you wanted to do this in conjunction with the next solid waste contract extension, because remember, the one that we're on is only two years right now. So if you wanted to look at it, doing it in the next two-year contract extension, and then maybe working out the numbers from that, if there's any increase in that, and go from there.
Well, that makes sense to me.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, you can bank that money and go.
Yeah, okay.
But no decision point tonight, we just wanted you guys.
I appreciate you bringing it to us.
But don't forget to remind us, to remind you to do it at the right time.
Matthews, Mint Hill, or Indian Trail?
I put out a wise across the state who charged one. As of right now, Weddington and Marvin do, but they literally just started it, as in like, a month or so ago. And they did it in conjunction with getting a new solid waste provider. They're a little bit different than us, because they don't have as much collection as we do, and they dump it all into the general fund, they aren't doing it enterprise fund.
But they're charging 100%?
Correct, yes, sir.
Erin, just to clarify that, when we say it's not tax deductible, we mean that currently people can claim their abhorrent taxes on their income statement.
Absolutely.
Whereas if it was a solid waste fee, it's not something that people could deduct from their tax, their income taxes.
Not deduct this from their taxes.
Thank you.
Not a tax, it's a fee.
Right, and most people, yeah, most people don't use that anyway.
The percentage standard deduction now is?
Gotta be high. Do you know what it is?
27.7 for joint.
Or the percentage of people that use that?
Oh, and it's a lot more now, but it'll revert back in two years, but the point is there's also a limitation, $10,000 is all you can itemize, state and local taxes, and your income tax to the state, if you work, covers all of that, so rarely would that impact a citizen, probably, but.
All right, thanks, Erin. Evening, chief. Now, which one of these are you in? Which one is the chief?
Okay, sir.
This one.
This goes to operating budget book.
Is this one? Okay.
We did not provide you the copies of the presentation to do that afternoon.
No, that's all right, but.
But the police chief's page. You need two texts?
Okay, I gotta start now, give me slides.
I got it.
You got it?
Mm-hmm.
It follows the administration page, so page four.
Okay, four-ish.
You'll see police in the upper left, maybe up the right.
I'm gonna make sure I'm on the right document.
This document.
I'm with you. Got it, okay, thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. Tonight, I'm presenting the fiscal year '24 requests for our police department. We've shown an increase of $81,000, which is 2.3% from last year. Our biggest increases come from salary and payroll and benefits, as you can see, $322,000 following the town's pay policy. Vehicle replacements, normally we ask for three vehicles to keep our vehicle cycle continually replaced, vehicles over 100,000 miles. Police cars went up 13% this year from last year, so inflation got us a little bit there. And then the only new item that we're asking for this year is to create a TASER replacement program, which I'll cover here in the next slide. But fortunately, we did have a cost savings for this year's budget of about $23,000 in fuel. Last year, we budgeted fuel at $4 pump price, you know, the fuel market was extremely volatile last year, we didn't ever, we never hit that $4 pump price, and this year, we're, again, being conservative, budgeting at $3.50 a gallon, so that we were able to reduce our fuel budget by $23,000. The TASER replacement program that I mentioned, our current TASERS are nine years old, the vendor, or the manufacturer recommends they be replaced every five years. Quite honestly, the only reason we're even talking about replacements run into battery issues, you know, they don't run on double As, they come with a special battery, so we've been having some battery problems. But this replacement plan includes kind of the whole gamut, the cartridges that are used in the field, training cartridges, holsters, batteries, the docking station so the data can be downloaded, it's just like a body camera, you can download the data, you can see when an officer turned it on, you can see when it deployed, tons of data can be pulled from that. Obviously, it's got a warranty, training suit targets, a voucher for instructor training. The only bad part of this is the new TASER is a completely, is a fairly different training platform, so our TASER instructors will have to be retrained, and then they'll have to come in and train all the officers on the new platform. And one of the other pieces that comes with that TASER plan is a virtual reality trainer, so officers can work through real-life scenarios in VR, instead of, you know, training and seeing a person standing there and just deploying the TASER in real life. And then notable items, like I said, that TASER was the only new thing we added to the budget, our big-ticket item. These notable items are, most of these, except for the TASER, are ongoing programs we've had. Our body worn cameras, I'm gonna skip around here a little bit, our body worn cameras and our in-car cameras are on a technology lease, basically, so that's an ongoing cost, but the body cams get replaced at the two-and-a-half-year mark, which, so this summer, our vendor will be providing all-new body cameras for our officers, and then our in-car cameras get replaced every five years. So we still have two and a half more years till the in-car cameras get replaced. The TASER replacement program that I mentioned, our vehicle replacement program, which we've talked about, and then our in-car computer replacement, obviously laptops that are in the cars in their office have about a four-year lifespan, and we are able to cycle four computers a year. By the time we cycle all the computers through, the ones from four years before will be ready to be replaced. And then Lexi Poll is our policy software system, which goes kinda hand-in-hand with our CLIA accreditation efforts. The two programs interface, so we can do both through the one system.
How many TASERS?
That's 20.
And that's all of them?
That will, we will, all the old ones will be replaced, and we'll have 20 brand-new ones.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Remind me of the colors, the colors, pink, red, and green, I know they mean something, but I don't know.
I'm gonna leave that to Jamie, because.
When you.
Is it, is it the?
Yeah, your legend is on your notable item sheet, and we are gonna talk through this tonight, Mr. Richardson. So on your notable item sheet, you will see the legend on the last page.
I see it, yeah.
And if it's green, it means it's in the draft budget document, and I know that blue is kinda funny. If it's pinkish, it is in the budget, and we're proposing that it be funded with reserves.
Okay.
Red, it's a prior-year objective.
Got it, thanks.
And then our five-year and beyond, these are all the same things we talked about, it just shows the progression as we push out the next five years, costs and so forth. Again, my budget presentation is very short this year, is, that's everything I've got. Are there any questions for me?
Well, the great news is, you know, your budget, you came in under budget this year significantly, so, but 2.5 million, is that right?
I will, that's what finance has projected, we do have about $400,000 in lap salaries, because we've been so short this year, like currently, we're down five officers.
Okay, so that makes it about $300,000.
Yeah, yes.
So going from $300,000 this year to 3.5 with the three vehicles, okay. Got you, well, I appreciate you coming in under budget, any way you can do it.
Try, yes, sir.
Any questions for the chief?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, news.
Just in time.
Yeah.
You got a lot of documents over there, Taylor Ray.
Just so that you guys can follow along with Parks and Rec, it is gonna be on, in your operating budget document, about 18,000, following the public work. And we'll see, it's cultural and recreation, Parks and Rec.
Y'all lost? Club. Hello?
Okay, so it's cultural and recreation, and it's the South Beach A, I'll give you guys each number.
Was it before the police?
It don't matter.
So if you go to the document, and then it'll be easier to get to.
This way?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going A then, okay. Two N, sorry. I'm just gonna, you tell me when to stop.
Okay, keep one more?
Okay.
There you go.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Are you good? Are you good, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you all good?
Yes.
Oh, no, it's okay. All right, let's rock and roll. All right, good afternoon, council. I'm excited to talk about all things Parks and Rec. So this year, we're asking for a little over 1.5 million. As you guys see, we're projected to spend 873,000. And keep in mind, 400 of that is a placeholder that we haven't spent, so that's why it's so low, and we also have about $100,000 in lap salaries as well for our department, so I don't want y'all to see that and say, oh, my gosh, why isn't Parks and Rec spending this money? We just have some projects that are underway, as well as, we had some vacant positions for a little bit. So this fiscal year, we have some salary and wages are increasing by $105,000 per our pay policy. We also have the Stallings 50th anniversary that we'll talk about a little bit later and hash that out, we put a $10,000 placeholder in that as a new line item, as well as our park events are increasing by $15,000 this year, and this is just due to vendor prices increasing, the services going up, as well as the number of events and programs that we're offering at the different parks, as well as purchasing some silent generators. I know there was a council member that mentioned, you know, the noise is not the best thing to have around at the event, so we wanted to make sure to throw that in there as well. So first, I just wanna kinda touch base with y'all about the events and programs that we're gonna offer in the next fiscal year. We knew that it was a council priority, a reach goal of 18 events, and when we sat down and really figured out what we could do, we're sitting at about 20 events for the next year and 15 programs. These will be offered in all the different parks, we think it's important to touch on Blair Mill, Stallings Municipal Park, as well as Privet as well. And then also, we'll have the Greenway opening that'll come in there this year that's really Next, I wanna touch on some stuff that we have in our notable items. So the first big thing that was in our capital improvement plan was playground replacements. It was in there for 300,000, but we decided to cut that in half this year, and I want y'all to see what about $150,000 of that is gonna do for Stallings Municipal Park. So I went ahead and put this map just to orientate you guys, and I kinda labeled it Playground 1 and Playground 2, so we'll touch base on Playground 1, this is the top priority, so this would be the first focus of the phased $150,000 for this coming fiscal year. So right now, the playground conditions are definitely not ideal. This playground, the furthest I can go back is it was put in about '04, '05, so it's about to have its 19th birthday, which is almost unheard of as far as playground equipment goes. And those two circles right there used to be homes to some slides, but the equipment is actually no longer even made. So what we had to do was barricade that area, the last thing we'd ever wanna do is just rip up a playground in the park and it be this huge hole, and have the community really confused on what's going on. So right now, it's up to code, but obviously, we have some issues with it. Like I said, the lifecycle of a playground now, especially in this park, you're looking at about 10 to 15 years, so we definitely have got our money's worth of what was there. And you can also see I've highlighted some drainage issues, so this money would go into a better surfacing material as well for this park, because what we're having to do is fork over a lot of money just to keep it up to code in Stallings Park as it is. Next, I wanna touch on Playground 2 that we'll be focusing on. This, I want to make sure that you guys are aware, the $150,000 is probably not gonna be able to pour into this playground, so that is gonna have to be something that we look at next year. However, I want this to be on y'all's radar, because we're sitting in about the same situation as we are Playground 1, it's reached its end-of-life cycle, it's about the same age, and we just want something that's a little more age-appropriate for this area. Right now, you have this playground that we've had to fix internally, same deal, we can't get the parts, as well as the swing sets, you can kinda see that there's some belt seats, as well as some bucket seats, we just wanna make it a little more friendly for kids that are between six months and 23 months, because we're kinda missing that age gap right now in Stallings Park. Next, I wanna touch on the wooden structures that we have, so it was in the CIP for $200,000 to go into these wooden structures, however, we decided to phase it, so it wasn't such a huge hit this year. So what we did was put $50,000 to see where that gets us, and I've highlighted the areas on this map, the stars, I wanna make sure it's not all wooden structures, it's just referring to the arbors and the pergolas that are in the park. So these were put in in 2012, when the first phase of Stallings Park went in, so they're about 10 years old. And I know that you guys really wanted to focus on a higher level of maintenance, this is something that's just coming around the corner that we really wanted to go ahead and fix, because pieces are, as you see, quite literally falling apart, so it's just time the lifecycle is ready to go and get these. And they were custom-made for the park, so that's why the ticket price is a little bit So here's the notable item, yes, sir?
Custom-made for the park 10 years ago, so the replacement, talk about that, is it, is it a different vendor replacing it with non-custom parts? Are we, what does that look like, the $50,000, who does it and what does it look like?
Of course, so the phased project is to make sure that we really keep this look, the same aesthetic of what was put in the park 10 years ago. We definitely want something a little more durable than this material, is kinda what we're looking at right now. The cedar, you know, it's full sun, there's not a lot of shade in Stallings Park, it's just getting a lot of wear and tear out there. So what we're gonna do is, we are in contact with who actually built these in the park, and they're gonna come out and give us just an idea of what they think's the best fit, lasts a little bit longer, what's that's gonna cost for us. However, we still have the plans for the park when they put these in, so it's not gonna be an impossible task if we have to outsource it by another company, we know exactly what guidelines they need to follow. So here's the notable items, I'll just kinda break this down a little bit, so up top, that's obviously a carryover, that's the $400,000 I was referring to. We plan on this dropping as the next few weeks go on, however, we thought it was important for you guys to see that, we just didn't cut it a half, not knowing if they were gonna be finished or not. Next, Stallings Municipal Park, the playground replacement, $150,000, like I said, playground number one, that's where we're gonna feed that money into. Next, $50,000 for Phase 1 of the wooden structures being refurbished. Then after that, we're gonna work on getting the tennis and pickleball court resurfaced, it has a lot of cracks in it, water sitting out there, it's time to just invest back, and we're gonna make it a little more pickleball-friendly as well when we do this process, something we just really wanted to focus on for the community, especially now as we start to offer tennis and pickleball lessons as well. And then the last two items, the Stallings 50th anniversary, the $10,000 placeholder, and then the $5,000 for the cost of the three silent generators. So here, you guys can see the five-year and beyond considerations for the Parks Department, I won't go into what I just talked about, and a lot of this other stuff that's coming up in the next few years is. So here, you guys can see the five-year and beyond considerations for the Parks Department. I won't go into what I just talked about. And a lot of this other stuff that's coming up in the next few years is just ongoing maintenance that we gotta start putting on this five-year plan. I believe the biggest thing on this is I wanna make note that I know that talk about a community center has came up in the past. When this building was replaced, there used to be a community center here, so I don't wanna scare you guys into thinking twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-eight, Unis is ready to build this thing, but I thought it was important to go ahead and put the Stallings Municipal Park, replace our sheds with an event center. Just wanted you guys to see that. But don't let it scare you that it's so close. But if it has to keep getting pushed back, I think it's just nice to see. And then here we go with the fee schedule. So this is something that hasn't been changed since I've been here, and I've been here going on three, going on four years. So what we have right now, very affordable to be a vendor in Stallings Park. I'll just be super honest. We've looked at other towns, what they cost. Our prices are super low. During COVID, we kind of put a pause on charging vendors to really see what kind of outcome we'd get out of these events. They were losing money. We didn't wanna put anyone in a bad spot. But now that we're coming out of that, it's time to start seeing a return of investment. You know, we're putting more money into the events. We think we could easily get what this new fee is. And we're just looking to really consolidate them. There was no reason to have a different summer series fee for other events. We were thought Stallings Fest could have a higher fee. However, all the other events can just be tucked into one category. And at the bottom, y'all see a new event and program participation fee. We wanted to put that out there, because we'd love to start offering stuff in-house, light tennis lessons, pickleball lessons, as well as just breaking even with our program cost if we were to do something for the Stallings residents or non-residents. Any questions with the fees?
Here's a, yes, um, there's a relatively small line item in twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-eight called Dry Creek Bed.
Yes, sir.
So not, don't spend two minutes. I'll spend maybe one minute, but I just, it's a stormwater.
Of course.
Eligible for funding, I assume, as well. What's the, what is the deal with that? Is that something that should be advanced? Because we're flooding a lot in the park, and if it's a twenty-five thousand dollar cost, our stormwater fund might be able to do that earlier? What's the?
Yeah. So it's kind of one of those things, you know, when this road starts getting constructed on, I think we're gonna see a little bit of more of the stormwater issues in the park. Right now, it's definitely nothing to be concerned, lose sleep at night, but it's something down the road we do think it might be an issue, and we wanna just get in front of it. There's a lot of park grants out there, like the Land Water Conservancy Fund that could fund something like this. And what I'm referring to with the Dry Creek Bed, it's that portion of the park, kind of in between the parking lot, this big playground, and then Shelter D. There's that little stream that just runs through. We wanna, instead of just have someone come in, grade it, and put this really like, not the most aesthetic thing for the park, really focus on plants, rocks, and have it naturally flow just a little bit better than it does. Does that kind of answer your question?
It does. It reminded me of the apartment project, Willow's, that's donating, I think, land to us. I can't remember. It's a, it's an outdoor education.
Yes.
Part of their, that the school would come use and do field trips. So when you put that in there, I mean, that's kind of neat. I don't know what that is or what it will look like, but if you've got a meandering Dry Creek Bed through there, it would be interesting to see it not wait till twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-eight, but just, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you're interested in bumping it up.
I can't imagine there's not grants out there for something like that that's got.
Of course.
Part of it in stormwater. Plus, I was just making the point that we've got stormwater funds. That's a, got a lot to spend that on, too.
Right.
Relatively small dollar amount for something that could be very impactful.
Right. And that's definitely something that me and Kevin can kind of look into. I know we kind of started the ball rolling a little bit, so. Yeah, thank you for that question. Anyone else on the five-year and beyond considerations? Before moving forward? All right. And then last but not least, the Stallings 50th anniversary. So for this, I know that y'all answered the survey questions, so what I did was kind of just combined them all, what was most popular and what made the most sense. So as you guys know, in twenty-twenty-five, that'll be the 50th anniversary for the town. What we're looking to do is combine the 50th with Stallings Fest as the big 50th celebration. But I do know that some people put that they would like to see activities all year round, and that is definitely something that we could do as well. However, the big focus would be combining it with Stallings Fest. That would be the one time everyone in the community could come out and truly celebrate. So also in the poll, everyone was really interested in like a spring or summer. So what we thought we'd do is we wanted to kind of move Stallings Fest up anyway, so we could do something more in the fall. We've had people come out to Stallings Fest in Halloween costumes and think it's more of like a Halloween carnival, and that's not really what we're going for. So moving this strategically up to the spring and summer of twenty-twenty-five, as well as combining it with the 50th. And this ten thousand dollars is just kind of a good starter for us to get these banner kits in place, to start looking at merchandise, get a nice logo for the 50th, and will truly let us celebrate from January one all the way to the end of December for the whole year of the 50th. But I really want this to be a time for us to kind of talk about it, if y'all are interested in what y'all see for the 50th. So I'd love to hear y'all's thoughts, because I just kind of started from here, so. Yeah, of course.
Will I speak for Steve and myself? No, wait, it wasn't Steve. Maybe it was Graham. Graham and myself, um, marked the wrong season.
Okay.
But we meant to do it with Stallings Fest.
Perfect. Awesome. Well, good.
But I remember we realized that like that night after we.
Yeah.
Turned it in.
Okay, perfect.
You don't think March is a good time? Is that what you're saying?
No, I don't know. I just wanted to, just to clarify that, um, that we didn't have a preference for spring.
Oh.
We were confused. Listen, we don't really.
Understood.
Anytime is a great time, basically.
Okay, perfect.
Don't go on what Graham and myself said, because we were just marking wrong boxes. And didn't realize it until we turned the paper in, that Stallings Fest wasn't until the fall. So whenever Stallings Fest is.
Right.
Is fine.
Okay, perfect.
For spring, summer, uh, April, May?
Yes, sir. So somewhere around there, just at the beginning of the year. So that kind of lets us focus on other event efforts at the end. And like I said, I think we've just seen people confused that Stallings Fest happens the weekend before Halloween. So they come all dressed up, thinking this is like a fall festival carnival, and we really wanna give Stallings Fest the purpose. We know what the purpose is, but making the community aware of what it is. And we thought combining it, too, is, you know, this started, and correct me if I'm wrong here, and it's like a backyard picnic is what Stallings Fest was, with sack races and lemonade, and they cooked out. So we're kind of going back to our roots a little bit, but elevating it for the 50th.
I think what we were saying when we marked the wrong boxes is we confused her that we wanted it to be a separate event.
Mm-hmm.
We thought we wanted to be, find, like, that way you already have the audience there.
Yeah.
An opportunity to make it a bigger audience.
Yes.
Yeah. And save some money.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah. What about September? I'm not.
Yeah.
Pro or con on either, just that if you don't want it that late in October, move it to maybe September. And I'm also thinking of temperatures usually starting to cool a little bit.
Right. And that's something we can look at, too, is moving this. I mean, we're open. We have time. It's just getting us all on the same page before moving forward, so.
You don't have much time, do you, though?
Yeah, exactly.
So I'll give you, again, I'm always full of ideas. Most of them don't work. So that said, uh, when, when's the founding of the town? July, what?
It's June seventeenth or twenty-seventh, fifteenth?
I don't know the actual date. It's June nineteen seventy-five, but I don't know the actual date. I'll have. Is it?
Twenty-fifth.
But in the, I had sent Unis from our town history, um, the, the tradition when the town started was an August picnic. I'm not trying to say we have to have it in August, but it was actually written down, an August picnic with potato sack races, lemonade. And there were some other games mentioned.
Yep.
So we just thought that was kind of neat that that was actually written down. So I sent that to Unis, and maybe we can play off of that a little bit.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest, is that from my pers- and I'd be glad to spend time fleshing this out later. Again, it's probably, off the cuff is never good. So I would, I would pen to that date as much as I could for something, send it, that will be the 50th anniversary, the founding of the town. Things like Founder's Day, things like, and doesn't have to be Stallings Fest move here every year, though it could as a Founder's Day celebration. There's something about a small town that you see in movies that doesn't exist anymore, probably never did, by the way, but, but, but doesn't exist. That if you could recreate some of that community, I think the picnic, sack races, those, those tend to speak to people.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, hard to pull off in urban Charlotte, but I'd love for you to give that a shot, tying it to our birth date, even though it would be a hundred and twelve degrees.
Yeah. I love that idea. I mean, we've, we've toughed it out in the heat. I just, I think it's a good opportunity to really.
I'd love you also, again, Stallings Fest, one of the critiques, and it's not a critique in a bad way, it's just an observation, I should say, is that most people that come to Stallings Fest aren't from our town.
Yep.
Given the layout of our town, not telling you anything you don't know. But, but how could you encourage promotions, gifts, awards, um, free admission? Car- I don't know, uh, to, to really involve, not to the exclusion of everybody else, but as a celebration that you live in this town. And try to, m- m- if it's twenty percent Stallings that come to Stallings Fest, make fifty percent the goal of attendance, be those who live here. And how would you do that? I don't know, but, um, uh, a hot dog on the grounds free for Stallings residents. Show wish.
Right.
Dress, driver's license, I don't know, something like that.
Yeah. I love that. That's what it's all about, the community.
Advertising.
And advertising. And that's something we could look at, too, is advertising more locally to Stallings residents, instead of just throwing it out on Facebook and throwing it out in the park. That is.
Does anyone in staff have a homeowners association list? Not that that's a catch-all, but it does have a big proportion of our residents.
Everything that's sent to the sunshine list also goes out to our HOA list that we have.
Okay. Maybe we need to use that more for Stallings events.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Specifically, that event, not, not a big pub launch update.
Right. Right. I think that's a good idea.
Then, excuse me, I don't know why I came out loud. And then if there's any way you could make this really big and really different, given our limited budget. I think I gave you an idea once that I had, and I've had another idea that I don't think I'll say publicly. I don't wanna get laughed at. Laser light show is the one idea.
Yep.
And that's, you know, we, we tried fireworks once or twice. Hard with all the tree cover in here, but the, a laser light show or even a drone light show.
Right.
Possibility of not outrageously expensive.
Yeah. It'll just be the money that holds us, but this will be a good time to get sponsors. I think this is definitely a great event for sponsor buying. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And if y'all know anybody, send them my way. Put that poll out. That would be great.
We gotta do, you know, we just talked about this briefly, but the, the better connections with the schools.
Yep. Yeah, I think so, too. And that's one of the events that we're hosting in the park this year in November. STEM in the Park was on the list, and that is actually a field trip opportunity for everyone at Stallings Elementary in the third grade. So we're actually working with their STEM department and bringing all the kids out here to the park to do different STEM activities. So we're definitely trying to focus on the money that y'all put in this, truly giving it back to the residents in a little more strategic ways. And that's just one example. Any more questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Last item on your list was the silent generators.
Yes, sir.
Pretty sure that was me.
Yes, sir, it was.
I didn't want us to buy the generators.
Okay.
I want us to have a higher, uh, qualification for the vendors to have silent generators.
Okay.
Or a baffle that covers them. They have those, too.
Yeah.
Maybe instead of raising fees, we insist that they have either a silent generator or the baffles that directs the sound upward in a way, rather than blasting out over the area.
Yeah, I'll definitely look into that, or even what those covers just cost for us to have. Maybe that's a little bit cheaper than just paying for these silent generators.
Then maybe part of the big plan would be wiring the park with the voltage that they need at each of the stations that they might have. Someday down the road, that might be.
Yes, sir. I'm on the same page. Agreed.
All righty.
All right.
Anything else? Thank you, Unis.
Thank you, council.
Sorry.
Good evening, everyone. You ready to switch gears? Just getting oriented up here. Okay, you should have a document that says general fund reserves in front of you. We have a couple of doc- I know you have a couple of documents. It's in a ledger paper, land state.
General fund balances.
Got that? And so Alex and I are gonna tag-team this portion, and so, um, so I invite Alex to jump in when he needs to. Okay, so it's very small up here, but what you see as of April, your first line, your unrestricted fund balance, as of April twenty-fourth is six point four million. Now, the good, good, good news about this draft budget that our town manager is proposing is that we are not proposing any appropriation from your unrestricted fund balance. So that number is gonna stay the same. So I wanna throw that out there. Now, uh, you go down to restricted, and that's your money like Powell Bill and ARPA that, like we talked about before, if you remember, very specific allowable expenses for that money to be used. And if we can just go down a little bit to your American Recovery Protection Act money, your ARPA funds, you'll see that you have a balance of three point six million. So I want to keep that in mind, because the strategy that we're presenting with you to balance this year's budget is a short-term strategy. You're not going to have these ARPA funds forever. So, um, being able to use ARPA money, freeing up the general fund uh, to do some of these one-time, non-recurring items is not, it's not something I'm just caution, caution, is not a sustainable strategy, but it will work for this year. If you remember that the, um, ARPA funds were using as salary replacement dollars for the police department, and we proposed to do that again, so that means the money's already in chief's budget. But once we put in that one point five, which we're proposing, uh, your ARPA transfer, that then frees up your general fund taxpayer dollars to do some of these one-time asks. And so that leads us into, well, what are these one-time asks? And you've heard over the last few meetings what we're proposing to use reserves for. And so the next series of slides, you'll see these res- these items, these one-time, non-recurring grouped by department. So here's for administration. You've got about one point five million that is freed up as a result of putting in, um, the ARPA transfer. So those are the four items under administration. Just let you think through that. Now, police department, you heard from chief tonight, so all of his notables, essentially, we are proposing to be funded out of, um, reserves. You've heard from Kevin a few meetings ago, and these are his items that we are proposing to be paid for. Max, you heard from, um, I need to strike that word study, because this is going to be a consultant, right, Max? That's gonna come in and, um, do some work for us in the marketing that's related to that. Now, all of these items live, when you go through your budget document, they live in the capital outlay line of each department budget. So they're in there. Um, they don't live, you know, independently of the budget. We just heard from Unis, and so the majority of her notables, we are proposing for, um, reserves. And then park mulch is a little bit different, because for a long time, you guys had it in, uh, her capital budget, but we've decided to move it over to buildings and grounds, because we feel that mulch is something that's part of maintaining parks on a regular basis. But we're not quite ready to go there. Does anybody have any questions? But we're not quite ready to go there. Does anybody have any questions about what we are proposing would come out of, what would be freed up as a result of putting in the ARPA transfer of one point five? And you'll see in your budget document on page, and I will number these pages for you, that's my bad. This is page two. It's, the exact number is one million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-one.
So the ARPA funds of one point five cover all of the reserve expenditures?
Yes. Because if you look at Alex's list, it totals to one point four, but to give you guys a balanced budget, it ends up being the transfer in is one point five. You're looking right now at a, at a budget of ten point two million. So, but no, 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 that your revenue has been flat. So new revenue coming in, if you recall, is about eight million, and then we added our gap. And so the ARPA money is going to fill the gap so that you get to a balanced budget of ten point two. Any thoughts, Mullings, Alex, anything that you may want to add to that?
Yeah, Mr. Proznek, I think you did a great job explaining it. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, yes, oh, sorry, I let Magar.
Three point six seven is our ARPA.
That's your balance, sir.
How, will, if we take one point five out, will we be able to draw that to zero by the end of the allowable time?
Oh, we will. Most definitely. I will defer to, yes.
Yes, sir. You have to state how you're going to use the funds by December twenty twenty-four and use them all by December twenty twenty-six.
We will, I.
They will be used up well before December twenty twenty-six.
I, I, my, I'd say you probably can use them up in a year and a half, like that. So that's why when we say today, you know, we could fund some of these one-time asks, freeing up general fund dollars, it's not a sustainable strategy. It's just a prime the pump for you guys thinking about that. It's a, it's a good one, but it's not going to be long-lasting. Any other thoughts, observations? Let me know when you guys want to move forward to the CIP document.
Well, just to the council, you know, everybody gets that league magazine, and every month there's an article in there about how a different town spent their ARPA money.
Mm-hmm.
And I find that interesting. You know, I don't, I think one other town did what we did, you know, to augment or replace the or, or some other studies, but most of them come for projects, one-time asks like this, which is easier for the public to understand.
Mm-hmm. Sir.
So what you're saying, Mayor, is if this list that's on page three, four, if, if, if that were, this is how we're spending our ARPA dollars, you're saying that would be easier for the people to say, oh, I get it, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're essentially, yeah, we're just doing it because of the time crunch, we're doing it a different way. But if asked, how are you spending the ARPA dollars? We could honestly say, these are the things we're affording, we're just finding a different way to use them, to, to make it work. So, so these are the things we're buying with ARPA dollars, one point four million, but we're not.
And Mayor, if I may, that is the, the narrative that we provide to the CRC, the Central Regional Council. They're asking for those narratives while we, yes, technically are paying, are using them to do salaries. They're asking for the, the real narrative, that the people want to know what you're really using it for, and that's often where those stories are coming from. So the, a lot of people are doing the accounting the same way we are, it's just in there providing the actual narrative so that the public can understand what the funds are, the freed-up funds are being.
Mm-hmm.
You could go a step further and say, we've been smarter, because some of these things aren't ARP-eligible. I can imagine a fiftieth anniversary celebration, no way that's eligible for the American Recovery Act. But we found a way to be flexible with our spending to buy things that we, that weren't, that might not be eligible, but are necessary for the town. That was probably a really bad example, using the fiftieth anniversary, something that's necessary for the town, but other things would be in that category.
As long as we're compliant, then they don't ask for any money back. I'll defer to Alex on that one. Can they call me?
Let me give you Alex's number.
So it's all, to, to me, it's all in the way you say things.
Mm-hmm.
Because you did a really good job. I'll give you this, because you, what you said for the first three minutes of your presentation made me feel really good. Meaning.
Thank you, sir.
We're not gonna see a dollar decrease from the six forty, six point four million unrestricted fund balance that stays the same. That's making me feel good, right? We're only taking things from this ARPA, and we've examined how we're doing that. That made me feel really good. Then on the other side, though, the thing that made me feel not so good was the last thing you said, which was revenue is eight million dollars, our budget is whatever.
Ten point two.
Point two. So we're overspending. What are we overspending on? These things here. And that trend can't continue, so we either need more revenue in a year or two, or we don't have any more of these. Is that, is that right?
Yes, sir.
I feel really good about where we are, but this is truly a, a, a one or two-year fix until either revenue needs to increase or some, some expenses need to drop. And police and salaries and personnel, those aren't decreasing, those are continuing to go up. So it does give you pause, but I, I like how you're positioning it this year at least, and I think it's responsible.
Good, sir.
Right.
Okay. Our next, our next item is your proposed five-year CIP. That's this document right here that y'all should have in front of you. And it's color-coded, so when you go to the last page of the document, you'll see the ledger on the bottom. And, and this isn't anything different from what you guys have seen, we're trying to keep the color coding consistent. Is everybody with me? I don't really see what you guys are looking at, but it's a five-year proposed CIP is the document you want. And just very high level, we broke it down by fund. So, and this is where it's, this is a decision point for you guys at some, very soon. So if you decide to fund Kevin's proposal of eight hundred thousand K in street resurfacing, you now have a general fund capital budget of over two million. We back that out, you're at one point four. The stormwater fund, that, that's very serious for, you really do need to look at a stormwater fee increase, is the recommendation. Now, ultimately, it's your call. But to do the, for him, for Kevin to be balanced, he needs a stormwater fee adjustment. So what I, you know, Alex and I are going to tag team this. Do, I'm not sure, Mayor, how you want to approach this? Do you want to talk about the individual projects? Do you want to talk about the color coding? Alex and I are ready to, to walk through it any way possible, but really, I wanted to turn it back over to you all to kind of mull through. You've heard from everybody on their capital requests.
Yeah, we, we understand most of the projects. The question I have is where would the eight hundred thousand come from? What fund would it come from?
Uh, well, that would be you guys having a, a serious, a serious conversation about a possible, a tax rate increase, sir.
So it couldn't come from ARPA funds?
Could potentially do that, but just know that, you know, you're drawing down from that three point six. So you could potentially do that. That is a strategy.
Yeah, so the answer is yes, you can.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It could potentially.
Well, that's, if, if we voted for it, you know, eight hundred thousand, you know, I wouldn't, I'm never going to hear a tax increase come out of my mouth. But we have ARPA funds. It's a one-time thing. I know Kevin has it out every year in the, in his. Be there, but if we fund it from ARPA funds, I'll, I'll support it, but if it's a tax increase, I wouldn't support it.
Okay, sir.
The rest of them, does anybody have any questions on any of the projects? I think we've talked over all of them, and they've made their requests. Anybody any further?
Everything on this list was on the other list, except for the eight hundred thousand dollar street surfacing.
Yes, sir.
Everything.
And then on your notable list.
Was that the notable items?
Right, and also what is not on are studies. So like Max will say, not, not throwing Max there, but you know, Max has some studies. That's not a capital project, that's a study. So some of those, this, you know, in the marketing, that's not a capital request, so, so they are two different documents. But these are just your capital projects.
So let's take, Mayor, if we take your idea and take eight hundred thousand, if that's the right number, out of ARPA, that takes the ARPA balance to something less than it is now, three point six minus eight.
Eight hundred.
That just means we, and if, in next year, whenever, when we try to replace the police department salaries, we replace only a portion of their salaries and go to the general fund for the rest, at some point, that math.
You still have to use the actual ARPA funds for the police salaries.
Okay.
On the ledger.
Okay.
You have to.
So would it?
It's just the freed-up funds, so.
So essentially, we're.
And then what you're saying is, is that then we would just have less freed-up funds?
Yes, that is precisely right. So just remember, you know, if, whatever that number is, you're freeing up your general ta, general fund tax dollars who have less freed up, exactly what Aaron said to Doug.
One point four is the ish, is the max we can do. Anyone here, because of the salaries, the police salaries?
Well, this year, you're, you're at one point five, so.
Ish.
Ish, yes. To use it in the amount of time, excuse me, that was proposed with the project plan when you applied for the ARPA funds. We have all five million, so now we're just drawing down on it.
But Mayor, pretend what you're saying is accurate. We have to expend those salaries in order to.
So the max we could get any one year.
No, because we, we haven't spent those salary, we have, we can't spend more than those salaries are at that given time.
Okay.
When will the five million dollars be spent over in the police department's personnel budget? How many years do we?
I believe it's two and.
Yeah, my guess is.
Not even a half.
Yeah, I think you could get, you could eke out another one point five years, but if you decide to do the eight hundred thousand, then it's less, you're using it up faster.
So if we pay for police for two years, this is where I'm confused, because you have to use it for police, or you can use it for street resurfacing. I'm confused. I, I, I don't want to belabor this.
Well, you're using it for, okay, you're using it for police, always, always, always.
Every dollar will be spent for police. Got it.
But now, we've already budgeted for police, right, with our tax dollars? So we're putting, we're putting ARPA in, we're applying ARPA to his salary lines. That frees up those tax dollars to do these other things, like the one-time asks, the eight hundred thousand. So you're in all technicality, using tax dollars to pay for these one-time, non-recurring, and then also the eight hundred thousand, if that's what you decide to do. You're always, always, always using ARPA for police benefits and salaries. Does that make sense, guys?
How much ARPA have we received?
Uh, over, a little over five million. That number should be there, Brad.
Total amount, sorry.
So we received.
Yeah.
Got it.
A little over five million we received this past fiscal year, two tranches.
Tranches, correct.
Okay. Funny word. Okay, so, so, so if we fund it as the mayor suggested, the statement is still true that the six point four in unrestricted fund balance will not be used?
Correct.
Okay.
We've talked about this, too. So sooner or later, ARPA funds go away and you have judgment day.
Mm-hmm.
So that money's gone away. We've done one-time projects, and our revenue should cover our expenses at that point. But will they? That's going to be.
Well.
They, they won't.
Yeah, they won't.
That's the, that's the question, right? Ultimately, the board is going to be faced with the decision of whether to raise taxes or to cut core public services, like painful stuff. You know, like core stuff, like decreasing trash pickup frequency, stuff like that.
Now, I'm of a mind of the mayor philosophically, tax increases should be the last door, but I'm also not of the mind that you can always promise never to raise revenue. That, that's impossible. So every year, if you raise taxes, you're a bad government body. What is the, how many years should you go between because of inflation and salary and being able to maintain core services and to run a nice town? You, you can't never not raise taxes, to use a double negative. What is the duration? And do you use the reval years to sort of adjust things? Or do you do things like right size of stormwater budget to handle some things? Uh, uh, we talked about the little twenty-five thousand dollar thing, your units you were going to do. We talked about you can use now, street, not now, we, we're learning, you might be able to use stormwater capital funds for roadwork if there's drainage involved. You have to be creative, and I would, I'd also, by the way, before we decide whether eight hundred's the right number, I, I have some questions about that. I, I remember the, and maybe we'll talk about that later tonight, too. Is that part of our discussion, the, the curves and the roads?
Right.
Not, not the curves and the roads, but the inflation of the roads. I, I've looked through sort of the list, and I, I think we just need to be smart and creative. And there's a science to this program we've got that grades the roads and signs them a PCI score. We want everything to be about seventy, but there's a subjective art to this as well, that, that I, I would say we should be smart about looking. I drove a couple of the worst roads today, and they're not as bad as I thought they'd be. But, but they're probably missing some stuff, right, subsurface? But I also saw a couple of segments in my neighborhood that go nowhere, that, that I'm not sure that the endpoint is right, and they even go on an unincorporated Charlotte. So that's not to make you feel like you missed something, you probably don't have it. But I have questions about the cost per segment and the rankings, that I'm not sure eight hundred is the right number for this year. It could be something less, so. Let me just put a, put a stamp on that. Before I decide on the eight hundred, and we do, I'd encourage us to sort of get another look at the, at the, at the, at what adds up to the eight hundred thousand, what roads and where, and how the CPI, not CPI, PCI index works. If you don't mind indulging us with that again, maybe not tonight, but at the next meeting or something. Um, and, and, and I would encourage us all to think philosophically, like, if you sort the sheet Alex gave us, there are hundred-plus streets that we resurface. If you sort them by neighborhood, which you can do, then you can assign every neighborhood a score. Like, my neighborhood is a seventy, or sixty-one, I think, actually. So maybe the policy is a neighborhood-level policy, or, again, I don't want to upend the cart, but at the same time, if in two years we're out of money to do street resurfacing, or we got to raise taxes, maybe there's a philosophical approach to street resurfacing that can be done differently by neighborhood, or, let's, let's, now, again, I'll stop talking, but I'd love to talk a little bit more about that before we vote on that. Doesn't have to be right now, though, because we've got three more meetings, two more meetings in May. Does that make sense? You probably did not every bit of it, but.
Part of it did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But in my mind, eight hundred thousand, if we don't spend it now, it just gives us a cushion, maybe not next fiscal year, the fiscal year after it, to have some money in the bank that we don't have to, we have enough revenue.
Right.
I'm going to be, that's the right number.
We're happy to go over that more.
And just, Kevin, to kind of stick in the back of your head, as an example, in my district, I would encourage us all to maybe to look at it by our districts. That's how I did it. I, I rode through Callenwood on the way over here today, and one of the worst and most expensive things on our project list is, forget the name of the road, but it's a long road around the curb by their little community park. And we could spend all that money, but don't forget, Callenwood is half an Indian Trail, and the rest of that road from Chestnut Lane to where we'd start is, is in equally poor condition. So would we spend a hundred and eighty thousand dollars on this section when Indian Trail is not touching their section? There's, that's what I mean, the art to all this stuff, why would we do that? And then the other art would be, how many? And then the other art would be, how many people use this street? Is it a cul-de-sac that's got six homes or is it a thoroughfare like Aurora Boulevard? Well, it's all Aurora Drive, but I feel like it's a boulevard now that it's a cut-through between Pleasant Plains and Monroe Road that I use a lot, others do. I do drive the speed limit, but that's a terrible road. That should be prioritized, I think, above a cul-de-sac. So, so that's the art. I'm just saying, let's, let's think more about that.
All righty.
You good with CIP, everybody? Okay, well, then this next document is your notables. We have that on your agenda for tonight to discuss. So that, uh, that's easily distinguished, boy, you've got the yellow highlight up here, which we have, if, if you're, if you're ready to go there tonight, we could do that. But on your last page is your legend, color coding, um, what all the different numbers mean and put the yes and the no's. So if it's green, that means it is in. Are you guys all with me? Yeah?
Yes.
If you see a green number and a green yes, that means it's in the draft budget. If you see like a pinkish number, it's in the budget and we're proposing that it's being funded with reserves. And that's that list that, um, you have of all those one-time, non-recurring's. And then if you see a red, that means it's, um, an item that's a carry forward, which much like what, um, Eunice has with, uh, Blair Mill Park and Vicrye. So that's how, that's, um, that's the lay of the land for that document. So I'm not sure, Mayor, how you may want to approach. Are you just wanting to review this list? Do you want to actually go item by item? Are you ready?
No, we won't make.
Have to be ready?
No, we won't make a decision tonight.
Okay.
Because Stephen and Graham aren't here.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions on any of these items?
Hopefully you guys are all familiar because all of the department directors have discussed these in their budget presentation, so now it's just a summary for you to kind of peruse and, and see whether or not. And it's, it's organized by department. And then by fund.
So just the only, I don't see any, maybe the co- I know the color's harder to see. It's not your fault, it's just the printer, but.
It, it's, it's not a good print job.
In the draft budget column, be sure, all I see are pinks and greens, which means they are all in the budget. Right?
That is correct, Mr. Richardson. But the distinguishing part is that if it's that pink color, that's your one-time.
It's in that list that we just saw that is one point four million.
It's in the list, yes, sir.
So the only real decision point. Is the, is, or is the roads, additional street.
That's, that's absolutely correct. That is the only item that is living outside of the budget at this point, the eight hundred thousand. So whether or not you guys want, however you guys, however council wants to do it, of course, Mr. Parker will bring more information, but that's the only number at this point that's living over here.
But council, you know, it's always tough decisions to say no. And I always refer back to our first chief of police, Lark Piler. It's their job to ask, our job to make a decision, yes or no. So sometimes we have to make tough decisions that wait. Fund it another year when money comes more available. The two I'm looking at are sidewalk study under transportation engineering. I need to think on that one. And then the sewer capacity study. You know, I know it's needed, but how close are we? If, if we have something in place, do we have the money to implement it? Now, we do a hundred thousand dollar study and it's a five million dollar project. And do we borrow that money and?
And Mayor, just from my notes, the sewer study and the sidewalk implementation, those were the two you, you pointed out?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's just my, my, my.
Yeah, absolutely. We want, we want anything we hear that is, like, some of these, I suspect, probably won't be controversial. Some of my, I know we, I'm hearing we need to have more discussion on the sewer study, the sidewalk implementation costs, the roads. So we just wanna mark those so we can be especially prepared next time to answer any questions on my end.
Yeah, and then the third one, I'm always skeptical, impervious service, surface study. What does it show us? So, you know, what's the purpose?
Got it.
Because if we're gonna spend eight hundred thousand on roads, I mean, that's the most impervious surface we have installing, but, uh, obviously it grows every year with more, more development.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Times like this, we wish we could start early, I guess, on the regular council meeting.
But on this list, there's seven hundred thousand dollars for additional maintenance and repairs subject to stormwater fee increase. So, uh, when, when will we? And I know you sent us information about our stormwater fee compared to other municipalities, right? And you need to have a decision by May the, excuse me, June the first. Is that seven hundred thousand dollars covered by the increase that Kevin and you guys are proposing? And is that increase equal or less than Indian Trail and other communities? Uh, you know, does that make sense? What, what is the stormwater fee you're recommending? I know you have it in the, it's, it's, it goes up forty-six dollars per house from thirty-three. Just remind, remind us of that. And when do we decide that and how much money does that bring? And does that cover the seven hundred thousand dollar?
Yeah, so ultimately, the stormwater fee increase for residential units would be annually, it'd be a forty dollar and twenty-five cent increase from forty-six to eighty-six twenty-five. And then that equivalent residential unit, which is two thousand sixty square feet of commercial space, is equivalent to one residential unit. And, excuse me, that is an increase of sixty-seven dollars annually from thirty-three to one hundred. And that would cover the proposed stormwater budget that's in front of you.
And the chart that you sent us comparing us to other communities, remind me, I haven't pulled it up. Is it using these numbers in that chart or our existing numbers? Do you remember what I'm talking about?
We can pull up that chart.
Cause if that's.
If you go to the Outlook icon on there, it should be, um, yeah, right there. And just click on that and scroll down through my, through that email and the chart will be in there. There you go.
So forty-six yearly is what we currently pay?
Correct.
Okay, so when we approve our increase, if we approved it to eighty-six twenty-five per house, we will be the highest for a residential unit except for Charlotte. Is that what we're saying?
So it's, it's not really apples to apples in this one because they've all got tiered systems. So until we implement that tiered system, this is.
Got it.
What we're proposing to meet the needs of the proposed budget.
Okay, I see.
And that's the goal with that impervious surface study, is to really get a good idea of impervious surface area per lot, so we can implement a more accurate and equitable tiered stormwater fee structure here.
Yeah, you can see there, I, I know it's probably hard if we're looking at the screen, but Monroe's got a base rate of forty-four dollars, but it goes up to eighty-eight. Matthews has a base rate of forty-five dollars, but it goes up to, looks like just under one forty. So for us, our, our commercial structure is tiered, right? Because it's based on the ERU. But the residential, everybody pays, you know, it's, everybody pays a cover charge and everybody gets in kind of thing. So there's, I, I, I think that was the concern, right? Equity between all the residential. It's not a have-to, but it kind of spreads it out more equitably. So the properties having the impervious surface and thus having the greater impact on the system pay the higher fee. With that being said, it's not something that we have to do. It just probably means that the folks that have less impervious service residentially are gonna pay more than they would have otherwise. And the folks that have bigger homes are probably gonna pay less than they would otherwise.
But our base rate, since we won't do a tier, our base rate becomes eighty-six.
Correct.
But we, but that was the impervious study that was thirty-five thousand dollars. That was going to get us to the place of, in the following budget year, putting in a tiered structure. So this is almost like a one-time charge to the system, so to speak, to make up for X amount of years of not raising this fee, you could put it that way. And then trying next year to right-size it so that it's equitable across square footage of impervious. Because when's the last time we changed this, Aaron?
We never have, sir.
I think it was twenty fourteen when it was implemented.
When it was implemented, it's been that same amount since it was implemented.
Yeah, I lost that battle.
It just seems, it's hard to, from a percentage-wise, it does feel wrong to go up to eighty-six from forty-six for every single house. But if we've never done it before, that's the problem in never doing it before. That's why I think you have to raise some sort of revenue every four or five years. Otherwise, you're just, look at other municipalities who just save, 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 then they end up going out of business or bad behavior. Okay.
How, how much was the study for?
Thirty-five thousand.
That, that's another one. I've had zero complaints from a small homeowner to a big business on why, why do I pay the same amount? Do they even care? If our, if our residents don't care, you know, why don't we implement it? Right, about that. And why don't we just implement it and then we explain it? This is what we're doing, rather than pay a consultant thirty-five thousand dollars to tell us something we already know that we wanna do.
Do we have to have a consultant do any of this legally? In other words, could we just say, huh, we're next door to Matthews, that's a comparable community. Let's adopt their stormwater fee schedule. Is that legal? Do we have to base it on some sort of cost recovery or real cost or? It would be, it would save us thirty-five thousand dollars, which would essentially let us keep the fee reasonable.
Those are, those are really great questions. I'm gonna take a stab at answering that, Mr. Parker and Ms. Nichols, help me out here. I think the study wouldn't help us set up the rate structure necessarily. We could do that. It would just be identifying the impervious areas within each of the residential areas. That's the information that we, we don't have. So it would be kind of like a technical mapping, um, tax appraisal. Appraisal isn't the right word, but assignment of impervious surface per, per building lot. So that's what we, we were hopeful when we, when we talked about this a year ago that the county might have some data that we could use. But we got that data back and it, it wasn't functional for our need here.
So, so, so let's say we don't do the study, so we go back and just have a one flat rate for everybody. And we raise it to whatever. We don't go to eighty-six, we go to something. How many tier four homes do we have, five, five thousand plus square feet in installings?
Right, not square footage of the house, it's the square footage of the roof.
Yeah, yeah, but two.
You have that for sure?
One of them's mine.
You got one of them?
So, yeah.
Right.
So I think we could do it, but, you know, it, it'll take some work, but, uh. Let's just go back and have a flat fee.
Drone, don't you? No, really, drone the whole town. Wouldn't take that long, would it? Well.
All right.
I'm, I'm okay with the one-year increase because I could say that we're just making up because we have so many needs and we've never increased it. However, I do think, study or not, and I kind of lean with the mayor, why would we study it if we can adopt it in neighboring communities' tier structure? I am also very interested in that economic development side of things, using the commercial properties. I don't know what the right number is, but, um, now that we know that we can, now that there's a potential option of doing some road improvements through stormwater fees, if they include drainage, I think about Union West Business Park, a couple of roads in there that cost about eight hundred thousand dollars that we don't own nor are required to maintain. They've asked us to every year or so. And the inability for them to do it and the unwillingness of us to do it, for good reason, is probably depressing the values and the attractiveness of that park. So to the extent we could follow this now, increase the fees for those large warehouse users, as much as we love them, right, they're employment centers, and, and gin up the stormwater fund so that it can be used for commercial road improvements, to build more of those impervious structure buildings that employ people in the business park especially and industrial areas, that to me makes sense. So I'm interested in this whole topic because I think there might be an opening to get some, um, economic development road projects done. Particularly in Union West Business Park, to the extent they can help us with that. Just for another day.
I, I know that a hospital is tax exempt on property tax, but are they exempt from something like this?
I believe they pay stormwater fee. They would pay a stormwater.
They would pay?
Yes.
Yeah, because obviously they generate a lot of.
Correct, yeah.
Well, there's a big pro right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
But just summary, I'm all, I mean, I agree with, uh, uh, Aaron and, and Brad. We haven't increased it. The labor's gone up, everything's gone up, so I don't consider it a tax, it's just a user fee.
Yeah, and if you ask, again, I'm gonna speak for the people on, if they don't listen to these meetings, I know, but the folks on Twin Pines, if you told them, instead of forty, if you'll pay eighty-six every year for the next few years, well. Yes, all day long, they would do that. I, I would do it, yeah.
Seven dollars a month.
Right.
All righty.
Thank you.
We through with the agenda. Uh, Alex, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
What time is it?
Six forty.
Oh, okay, that's a good stopping point.
That's good.
Everybody take a bi- a break. Anybody have any questions or anything?
I'm asking to adjourn the special meeting, sir.
Motion to adjourn, somebody? Who, who said it first?
I'll, I'll motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Drake, all in favor? I'd have it, thank y'all.